Mr. McPartlin?
Here.
Mr. Darapino?
Here.
Chairman Walsh?
Here. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from the July 22 meeting that were included in your packet. To have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
By Mr. McPartlin, I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Darapino. Anybody have any corrections or comments? I have none.
I do have a couple. On line 55, Mr. Scrubby Tennis was absent that day, so that should be replaced with my name. And then, the same for line 86 and line 107.
Thanks for catching that.
It was accurate in the beginning. It did reflect me being present in the beginning.
Any other corrections or comments? Okay, that's, you know, it's a straightforward amendment, so we'll just vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the minutes as amended are approved. Thank you. All right. So we have one public hearing tonight, a public hearing on 1448 Balltown Road. Application for special use permit and site plan approval for an Ace Hardware store. Just wanted to let the public know that the applicant is not going to be able, applicant or a representative of the applicant is not going to be able to make it tonight. So we're going to go ahead since we noticed the, the public hearing. We'll go ahead and we'll read the notice, we'll listen to comments, but we're going to leave the public hearing open. We'll leave it open right through to the August 26 meeting. They do expect the applicant to be present then, and we will continue the public hearing under unfinished business at that meeting. So we'll, you know, listen to what you have to say, we'll take note of those, and we will pass those on to the applicant. Anything significant comes up, and have the opportunity to respond to those and continue the public hearing on August 26. So with that being said, I'd like to have you read the notice for the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to zoning pursuant to the ordinance of the Town and Niskuna, New York, and the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission at the Town and Niskuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at 1 Niskuna Circle on the 22nd day of July to consider the application for Thomas Dingly for the site plan review and special use permit of 1448 Balltown Road relative to the following. For the location and operation of Ace Hardware Retail Store at 1448 Balltown Road, and the property is located in the CN Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. A copy of the site plan will be available at the Town Clerk's Office. All parties in interest and citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard at the Planning Board and Public Hearing and will be held for mentioned.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a site map if anybody wants to take a look at it or has any question. Like I said, the applicant will not be here to have a presentation, but we'll go ahead with the public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard regarding this public hearing, please come to the microphone, state your name and address to the record, and we listen to what you have to say.
Lorraine Saban, 2455 Brookshire Drive. I am so opposed to this that I almost want to put a for sale sign up. You know, I think our interpretation of commercial or retail or whatever you've designated for that area for the, when I think of what we have there, we have a very, very prestigious law office, and we have Channel 6, which is the first TV station in the country. And now, and of course, at one time, this was a health spa, very, very special. The parking was, of course, in the back where it belongs. And now we want to put lawn mowers and garden equipment and furniture and a hardware store. I think we're denigrating Balltown Road. It's a two-lane, it's a two-lane road. It probably won't be a four-lane road until, I don't know, the big balloon or something. But right now, and for the next 50 to 100 years, it's a two-lane road. The traffic on the road is beyond measure. You all travel it, I travel it very frequently. It has become the entrance to our four corners. And by, I don't know, maybe it's somebody saying, you know, the wider the road, the more the traffic. Whatever we do to try to improve things in Niskuna, very often, we've made it worse. Niskuna is the beacon for Schenectady County. And when I say beacon, I say more taxes, better assessment, a more residential, a, a town that was conceived to be residential with a periphery of commercial. Now, we've broken some of those rules as to what started Niskuna 200 years ago, almost 300. The point that I'm making is that, in my estimation and longevity living here, the planning and zoning have been so important as to what we conceive as our town. Ace Hardware does not belong there. We have two shopping centers. Not that they're great. The one, of course, you know, I opposed. And, and I find that to be a disgraceful shopping center. There's nothing attractive about it. There are frequent vacancies. There's, I think the only reason we, we allowed it is to get the road to go from Balltown to State Street. And, which of course, we have to maintain. You know, not everything is done with the resident mind or the town in mind. I think a lot of it is done for other reasons. And, and it bothers me because as we live here longer and longer, we realize the benefit of living here and hoping that we don't allow the town become developed by variances. Everybody wants to do something different. They come in pledging to do this and to do that. They're not here a year, they're two years, and all of a sudden, they, they want to change everything. Or they want to add to it. Or they want to disturb it. We are now disturbing a residential street with commercial trucks to use a facility that we've not only bonded, but we have raised our fees in using the water and sewer plant. I know I'm going off track. But the fact is that a special use permit and a site plan approval. What, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I thought we would have a presentation tonight. And obviously, they have other fish to fry, as they say. I do want to tell you, I don't like the interpretation of this is allowed in that building. That happened to be my broker. And every time I went there, for one reason or another, there was flooding, there was problems, they hated the building, they couldn't wait to get out and build their own, which they did. And now we're going to have, and, and I'm sure Ace Hardware is a very profitable kind. We have, I don't know, the big one over there in our shopping center. And now they want to put this building, and I guarantee you, just like we have CVS, oh, no, no, we were never going to have anything outside. You go ahead and approve gas tanks. I mean, even though you think they're not visible, it is visible. I see it every time I go by. I see that little cage. Now, we're not supposed to have those things. When they tell us they respect our town, and then we go ahead. My, my argument is really the special use permits. And I'm hoping against hope you'll rethink. You know, when it gets to this point, I know you have an obligation to hear your applicants. But you know what? I really think we could get rid of an awful lot of them if we start to interpret the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance and try to live by what some very wonderful people decided was the way we wanted this town. I hope when we come back on the 26th, we will be honored with their presence. And I'm hoping that I will have a few more days to come and argue about this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearing, open for 1448 Balltown Road, Ace Hardware. Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else? Here, door, give it a second. No? Okay, seeing no one else, we won't close the public hearing, we'll leave it open, we'll continue on August 26, and we'll have a presentation from the applicant hopefully then. Okay? And by the way, we do have under discussion items, 1448 Balltown Road later tonight. I expect minimal discussion on that without the applicant here. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town and Niskuna, please come to the microphone. State your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Privilege of the floor is open. Anyone? No? Okay, seeing no one for privilege of the floor, we'll close privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business tonight, but under new business, we have Resolution 2019-25, Resolution for Site Plan Approval of a Target Beacon at 428 Balltown Road. Ms. Chiketti?
One of the purposes of the meeting is to take action on a final site plan approval. Whereas Matthew Flansburgh, representing Target Corporation, has made an application to the Planning Board for a site plan review for a Target Beacon in the parking lot at 428 Balltown Road, Niskuna. And whereas the site plan is shown on a two-page map set entitled Target Store T1521 Drive-Up Concept Plan, 428 Balltown Road, Schenectady, New York, 12304, prepared by Kim Lee Horn on July 22, 2019. And whereas the zoning application, zoning classification of the property is Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District. And whereas Section 220-48.4 states that direction signs shall conform to 220-22 and shall be the size not to exceed three square feet and not to exceed four feet in height above the existing grade of the street. And whereas the proposed beacon sign is 13 feet 9 inches tall and 1.5 feet by 1.5 feet wide, and therefore requires a waiver. And whereas Section 220-48.21B of the code allows the Planning Board and Zoning Commission to waive one or more of the standards set forth in the Article 8E Design Guidelines and Standards for Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District. And whereas the board has carefully reviewed the proposed proposal, and by this resolution does set forth its decision hereon. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Planning and Zoning Commission has determined that the proposed waiver to allow a Target Beacon has a minimum negative effect on the aesthetics and compatibility with the surrounding Shopping Center Commercial zoning, and therefore grant this waiver for said proposed site plan and hereby grant final site plan approval.
Thank you. Have a motion on the resolution? Okay, I'll move the resolution to be adopted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McPartlin, and I know we have the representatives there. So do you want to just tell us about, you know, we received some information in our packet over the weekend. Obviously, we have the resolution tonight. Maybe you can just kind of brief us on what the plan is here, and then we'll see if you have any questions or not, okay?
Sure. My name is Tim Zhang. I work with Kim Lee Horn. I'm here representing Target in their proposed drive-up beacon. So basically, Target is in the process of implementing a drive-up service program across all their stores nationwide. And what this drive-up service program does is it lets their customers shop online using this Target mobile app. With this Target mobile app, they can click a drive-up pickup option when they check out, and this lets them come onto the site, move, park their car in the designated area near the, near the drive-up beacon, and click a "I'm Here" button on their app, and then a Target employee will come out, see them, scan a barcode on their mobile app, give them a package, and then they're out. The turnaround time for this is about two minutes, so we're causing minimal traffic. And we're also trying to keep a consistent aesthetic look across all our stores nationwide so that when customers come onto the Target store sites, they can very easily locate the beacon, which is typically one or two stalls away from the Target store entrance. So, like I was saying, Target has already implemented this drive-up service in over 1,500 of their stores nationwide. All the similar locations, so it's super important for us to have consistent drive-up beacon locations. So, yeah, with that being said, we're asking for a waiver for the 12-foot-plus solar panel beacon.
Thank you. It's, was Latham changed over, the Latham store, yet?
The Latham store?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
No. Yeah, you don't know, okay. I didn't know if you were working with the other locations, just in Niskuna location.
We probably are, it's just not our office working on it.
Okay, all right.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You're, you refer to the component called the cabinet, and you also refer to batteries to be housed, lower cabinet section.
Right.
I'm assuming by that you mean cabinet for all the electronics, et cetera, associated with the solar-powered side.
Yes, exactly.
That statement's correct, right?
Completely internally powered.
Right. Are electronics in nature designed what's actually driving the size, specifically the height and width? Not the height and width, but the lateral dimensions, the width and the depth?
The, the size of the beacon, again, is to remain consistent with the nationwide design and also for visibility sake. If you drive onto site, we want all customers to be able to see the drive-up beacon, no matter where they are on the site.
So, let me follow that question up with at least the perspective I'm taking, which this board will know very well. Is one statement that I always mention. Is there a way to get a beacon that's conforming with, without needing a waiver?
Yeah.
So we tried that. We tried another post and panel option already, but Target came back and said that, no, basically. Because it's, it's Target's final say. So we had sent over three other options for post and panel as a backup option. And one of them, I know you guys had approved without, without any planning board or anything. But after we went back to Target and asked, they said that they wanted to be consistent with the rest, so we have to come to the Planning Board meeting for this.
Just state your name for the record.
Veronica Presia, so I also work with Kim Lee Horn.
Yeah, so we would, we would essentially allow them to have handicapped, handicap parking sized signs that just say "drive up" instead of handicap parking because they conform with directional signage, and it's very minimal, it's only two parking spaces that's being affected. But if they want this, they have to come to you guys.
Right, so, so, so that's why we're here. And look, at the end of the day, it's actually not Target's final say, it's our say, right? And the question is, so a design of a conforming sign does exist?
Yes, and again, going back to what I was saying earlier, again, we want to make, remain consistent. And number two, it's going to cause a lot more traffic congestion in terms of if a customer comes on site, they can't locate where the drive-up handicap sign would be, if that's what we were proposing. But if they see a 12-foot beacon, it's very visible, it's red, internally powered and illuminated. So it's very easy to see, even if the parking lot is fully parked.
You're saying a 12-foot beacon, what we've got says 13
Yeah.
8, 9 inches.
Plus the solar.
Yeah.
14.
Yeah, that's with the solar panel added on top of it.
13.75 feet with the solar panel.
Doesn't the mobile app tell you where the beacon would be in relationship to the store?
Unfortunately, no, because they would have to be able to customize the mobile app for each individual Target store, which would be too complicated of a program.
Is it located in the same general vicinity at every store?
Yes, so again, two, two parking stalls away from the Target store entrance. Typically, that's where it's located. We try and avoid affecting actual handicap stalls. And we had to move it three stalls away from the entrance because there were two handicap stall areas in the front of the store.
Any other thoughts, questions? I mean, for me, it was a one foot by one foot, I think, is the pole itself, right?
Yeah.
You know, there is quite the grade there, you know, as we know, that Target sits down quite a bit off the Balltown Road. So personally, you know, knowing how we've talked about the retail situation in the town, the open storefrontage that we have, I didn't see a problem with this based on the topography of the, the site. And I think it may be something that would, you know, help Target stay there, was my view, so.
How much of a variance is being required here, Laura? Do we, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to check the
Um.
My insurance is new.
Oh, your directional signs can't exceed four feet in height.
Yeah, so it's like 10 feet.
So, and then sometimes our code doesn't have this kind of, where the sign starts is where the height starts, but generally speaking, directional signs aren't supposed to be higher than four feet. And the other place that we've looked at raising directional signs was 1769 Union Street because they needed to be able to see to drive around that building. Do you guys remember that?
Uh huh.
So we let those go to five feet high, I think, so that you'd be able to see them over the cars.
Right. But right now, we're talking about more than three times. Very.
Yeah.
Yep.
How about the lateral dimensions? Are those a big deal? The one and a half, the one and a half?
Um.
It's only the, the collector is only the thing that's one and a half, one and a half. If I read that correctly, it looks like the pole itself is one foot by one foot.
Yeah, so the interesting thing about that is, you know, you, we allow double-faced signs, but I believe this is a square. So I put that in there just to be on the safe side, but one, you know, one, one foot by one foot, it's not exceeding the square footage that's allowed with directional signs. It's just kind of an odd multi-face because we normally see them, like, just front and back, and this is four. Right? This is four.
Yeah, it's four.
Yeah, this is four. So that's, and it's a little unusual, but the square footage is not problematic.
So, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself here, and, you know, obviously, there's a board procedure in terms of motions and votes, et cetera, but my thought on this is that there's an engineering, there has been engineering work done on the conforming sign beacon. I would be really interested to see that, and the key part I'd like to see with that is why that actually impacts the sightability of the sign. Negatively impacts the sightability of the sign. Of all the arguments you made, that's the only objective argument that can benefit the consumers and customers in Niskuna.
Right.
Right? So at the end of the day, they're the people you want to benefit. They benefit from having a target there, they use that target in various capacities. We obviously would love Target to stay because we're all customers of Target, it's good for the town, et cetera. However, the, like I said, the rationale argument is how much does a conforming sign, you know, prevent sightability and visibility so that consumers are going to be driving around the parking lot looking for it, knowing fully well that they had said, you know, 15 minutes ago, "I'm coming over to pick it up."
Okay.
So that's, it's, I'm just asking for another piece of information, but the board doesn't have to agree if that's a I'm, I was just intrigued to the fact that you actually had a conforming sign design.
I don't know if I'm allowed to do this. I actually brought an additional exhibit that is not for this store, but it's for a San Diego store that our company has worked on. And essentially, what we did was we took a car, we drove it around the site just to take pictures of the drive-up beacon. And at the time, the parking lot was extremely full, so there were cars lined up. You could not, you would not be able to see the beacon if it was that, like, the handicap stall size. So I don't know if I'm allowed.
Yeah.
Come on, we'll pass it down and take a look at it. Once you get it on the end, we'll pass it down, take a quick look.
So yeah, the first page shows all the locations we took pictures of, and the following pages are the actual pictures.
So are you involved in other sites besides Niskuna, Target?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other sites, if you go on before, at any boards where it has been disapproved, and you've had modifications to be more conforming?
Yes, typically, we try as hard as we can to get to the beacon, and if absolutely necessary, we'll switch to a different, perhaps a post and panel design, which is kind of just two poles and a sign on the pole, front and back, it'll like have a Target drive-up logo on it, and that's pretty much it.
And how tall is that?
I think it's eight foot. The worst-case scenario is we use the, the handicap one. I know the, the one place that I've worked on that used it was Riverdale, New Jersey. And the only reason why we had to use that is because the Target store was located on a rooftop of a parking lot. So the beacon would have structural issues. So we had to just stick with a smaller sign.
I'm curious if there was any problems, no removal around these beaches.
I wouldn't know the answer.
They're being overhyped here.
Yeah. I wouldn't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
There's a sign of tube on the bottom. That's what the tube, that's concrete on the bottom, two feet.
Okay. I'm thinking.
Could you pull the microphone down, please?
I'm thinking for a driver of plow to see it, it's probably much more visible if it's more than four feet tall. Therefore, less likely to get run down and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the other advantage to the height of this, it keeps the solar panel away from hands' reach.
Yeah.
Which is probably the one component you don't want damaged.
Yeah.
Next to the post itself.
Exactly.
Because if the solar panel goes down, the system goes down?
Exactly. It won't, it won't light up anymore.
You've got more justification than you appeared at first. I will say, I don't think it's a great aesthetic addition to the site, but
Laura, do any
It's retail.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask something?
It's just that we've been indulging other things that also don't add to the aesthetics of various retail sites because that's the way business is going. Whether you think it's a good idea or not, it's the way things are going. People don't want to get out of their cars. They'll spend a lot of money, go to fitness centers and work out. But heavens forbid they should have to get out of their car and go pick up their stuff.
I have a question. I, I think I'm okay with the, the height, I think. As Leslie said, there's, there's plenty of justification for the height. I'm curious to know more about the reasoning behind the two-to-three parking bay separation from the main entrance. And I'm wondering how, what, what mechanisms you have to ensure that employees follow the recommended path for loading items into the cars. I see you've got a little pedestrian suggested walkway along the, along the concrete sidewalk to down three bays. I can just as easily see people cutting through the parking lot or, you know, improvising a little, so that could present some kind of public safety issue.
Well, to start off, there's always going to be people who cut, no matter what. There's going to be customers cutting, there's going to be employees cutting, like, that's not something that we can stop with as much signage or crosswalks as we can. It's just something that's going to happen. I'm sorry, what was your first question?
Well, you could move it closer to the entrance.
Yes.
Where, where there is a known pedestrian
Right.
traffic flow, and, and generally, drivers are a little more alert
Right.
at that, at that crosswalk near the main entrance. So personally, I, I think it makes sense to be a little closer to that, if possible.
We didn't want to affect the handicap stalls, and I know distance is also a factor that Target takes into account when they give us their recommended drive-up locations because for the drive, the Target employees to actually scan the barcode on the customers' phones, they need access to Wi-Fi. So Wi-Fi is only accessible through a certain distance around the front of the entrance. Whereas like if it was, say, all the way at the back of the parking lot, you, the Wi-Fi wouldn't reach there, therefore, they wouldn't be able to give them the package because the barcode didn't scan. And also, for employee safety, there's always cameras in the front of the building. Whereas if we put in the back of the building, if someone gets hurt, we don't have any, you know, evidence, nothing.
How, any data on how successful this has been? Has it used a lot?
Yes. For the 1,500 stores that the Target has already implemented the drive-up beacon, we have experienced around a daily 24 customers that use it. And then also, there's always been a positive, positive response. There's a multiple positive responses to the drive-up beacon.
So primarily, like groceries, is that the, the big?
I don't have that. Yeah, it's a quick two-minute turnaround.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. There was, so I'm, I'm actually still back on height. And thanks for actually showing those pictures. So we had allowed them to actually go as high as the handicap signs, right? We would
Yeah, I mean, the stores, like ShopRite and stuff, have actually installed ShopRite From Home signs that are the equivalent of a handicap, they're equivalent in size and space as a handicap parking space as a hand, handicap parking space, and they just do those under building permit.
Right, so that's my, so there's two questions. So the interesting thing about those pictures is the handicap signs are about just as visible, or not visible, as the, uh, in the shots that you've taken.
Mm-hmm.
As the beacon. So that's a good thing, the handicap signs could probably work consistently. The second thing was, so ShopRite, Hanaford, over by um, Consol Road, they've all done a drive-up pickup. Did they require waivered sign, uh, waivered signage?
Um, I haven't seen the Hanaford ones. I do know the, the ShopRite ones, I've seen them, and I, I think they actually just put those up, but it, because they're consistent with handicap parking space directional signage, like, you know, as long as it, you know, meets, meets our codes.
So did you ask them to work up that engineering for a conforming sign, or did you guys come with that at the beginning?
No, I asked them.
Okay.
I think their one was slightly bigger, right? Your first one? Do you remember?
Is that the beacon?
The first.
The first in the middle, I think, was, it was, was this the very first in the middle? It was this one, yeah, so I did ask them.
And then you asked.
Yeah.
ShopRite has a pickup lane, though, right? We pulled up to the store.
It's not a pickup lane, they have like three spaces, and not 100%, it's ShopRite From Home. I actually think that people who work from ShopRite From Home.
They bring it out.
Deliver it.
It's over on, that, that one on the left.
Yeah, yeah. It's right around the building, I think.
Yeah, it's a delivery service, so it's not actually people driving up to those signs and waiting for their cars to be loaded.
Special lane to pull into, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little different. I don't know how the Hanaford one works.
Yeah. Are there any of these in the northeast?
Yes.
There.
Yeah.
So to Leslie, Mrs. Gold's point, uh, Mrs. Golds, um, snow removal, maintainability, lighting, all that stuff?
I mean, it's.
You know, lack of sun?
Yeah, it's, it's fine. And in terms of the snow removal, um, a good point to bring up is that it's about like the size of a light pole, and light poles typically have a concrete base as well. So if light poles won't have the problem with snow removal, then I don't think the beacon would have it either.
Linda's seen one in Queensberry. Seen it?
Didn't realize it was 13 feet tall. I don't know if they talked about it.
The one in Queensberry?
The one in Queensberry.
That would be nice to know.
We, we can't, the beacon itself is like, that's the standard beacon.
It was this, it was this side?
Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful.
I mean, I also want to remind the board that the topology of where Target is, for, you know, pretty much all but one access point, one proper access point, it's actually on a downhill slope, right?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, you know, from Balltown Road elevation.
Yeah, so, meaning it shouldn't be too hard to see a sign, especially since you know that's what you're going to, because you've had a discussion about it. You know, a handicap person coming to the store actually kind of knows where they're going to go far.
Right.
I would expect that a person who knows they've just bought something in the app kind of knows it's going to be someplace in the front.
Right.
Any other questions? Comments?
I agree with Mr. Khan, I'd like to see what other options there are, since it's already been vetted out.
Right.
Maybe table it till the next meeting, just to see what else we can take a look at.
Now, we have a motion on the floor to vote on the resolution, so we'll need to follow through on that. But there's a different motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table the resolution.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Khan to table the resolution, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Diarpino. Um, Ms. Chakay, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Shenfield?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Nay.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Uh, I'll, uh, vote to tell you all vote aye, and the reason being that, uh, since this is the first time we saw it over the weekend, we received in a packet, we haven't had any discussion. A lot of times, an applicant will come in front of us, we'll have this discussion, and then, you know, we have the resolution next meeting. So, um, I think I already gave my comments how I feel about this. I don't think it's a big impact to the site, especially based on the topography, but uh, based on my, uh, the board's input, I'm okay with seeing the alternative, which we haven't seen, that would be conforming, so at least we can discuss it. Uh, we'll take a look at that, have that in, uh, get that to the town planner, sure to get that out to all of us, and then we can have you on the agenda for the next meeting, and hopefully we can get there.
Okay. Is, sorry, is it possible for you guys to also kind of take a sense of what the surrounding targets are? Because I'm fairly certain that Glendale's are a handicap type of sign, which would be the closest target to us that I know of.
Yes.
Yeah, just ask around, and then like, the, I think the other question was, what does Latham have? Because it's also the other.
Which isn't far, you know.
Yeah.
The Latham store, whether they have one or going to have one.
And whether the Colony store has one as well. So any of the ones that are.
It does.
I said, whether they do or not.
Yeah, it's Clifton Park, so, you know, we could go take a look at, if there's a store locally besides Queensberry, we can take a look also, so we have that information, how we feel about it, you know.
Do you guys know with certainty, close, like within a 20-minute drive from here, if there is another one of these existing?
Not with certainty, we'd have to do some research on our end.
Probably not from here.
Yeah.
No, no, that's fine. You might just say, you might have a database or something. Um, because I actually don't recall seeing.
I'm pretty sure Glendale has one, but it's not a beacon. I think, I noticed it the last time I was at Target, because I had seen these middles.
So we got to do some research, too. Because all I was able to do after I got this was actually ask what this was, so I Googled it.
I can check Queensberry Thursday, I'll be up there.
Cool. Don't forget your tape measure.
Always have one.
You probably have.
I always have one, at least two.
Would not expect it.
Right, we're, we're clean on the, uh, the original resolution, right? Okay.
Look, I mean, just on procedural point, right? I like that we've moved resolutions for as long as we've had, it doesn't mean that we need to approve them every time they come.
Yeah, yeah, again, my point is, I felt pretty comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I think you know that, I stated that.
Good.
Uh, but, you know, you know, again, the board not having the opportunity to, you know, see it, have, discuss, uh, what are the options, um, I'm o, I'm okay with making sure that, uh, we do diligence and, uh, we're comfortable with going forward.
Right, and as a planning board, I think we're obligated to ask the question.
Yeah.
What does conformance look like?
Right.
Right, and, you know, you guys really need to prove to us that conformance is just not going to work for the benefit of the consumers of Niskiwa.
And of course, if Glendale does conform, the question is, why wouldn't you hear?
Okay.
All right, and those are all just data that we don't have as of tonight.
Yeah, maybe I'm wrong, but I would just like for you guys to check Glendale, because I was just looking at it sort of out of the corner of my eye. Yeah.
Okay.
Right, yeah, we're sorry about the, the ride, obviously, but, uh.
Where'd you guys come from?
We came, yeah, White Plains, New York.
Okay.
So.
Oh, you took the Taconic, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, that's not bad.
Fun drive, though.
It's not, it's not a fun drive, especially a dark, every, so, look, I apologize, but we, we got to do our, you know, we got to do our due diligence on it for the rest of the year.
Just to pose the question, um, I know it's on North Box, is there a way for it to be approved when we're not here? Just so we know from our end.
What was that question again? I'm sorry.
Is it, is there, can this be approved when we're not here?
Well, you can have a resolution, you don't need to be present, we can, we can act on it. Uh, but, um, you know, obviously, it's always great to be here and answer questions, so what I would suggest is, you know, do your homework on the questions we've asked, you know, whether there are other similar ones in the area that we can look at, whether there are other ones that do not conform with this, uh, Target-wide design, and, you know, and the basis, you know, why it's okay, you know, in that situation. If we have all those answers, uh, we can get a project lead, we have a volunteer for project lead.
I can do it.
Yeah, Mr. Diarpino will be project lead, so if you get the information to, uh, to Laura, we'll take a look at it, and we can have some email traffic discussion, uh, to see if we're comfortable, and if we can get there, um, you, you, you always don't have to come.
Right.
There's always a risk that we would have some questions, but, uh.
I, I mean, just, just to add one thing to that, and it comes strictly from a perspective of, you know, inconveniencing the engineering team here on late Monday night, Taconic or Thruway, whatever else it is. I recall we did once have somebody teleconference in.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was a CV, it was the, so, I mean.
Yeah.
It was, it was, it was the aforementioned CV, it's, uh, you know, propane tanks. I don't have a big problem with that. If you guys can get us at least the paperwork and anything else to see beforehand.
Yep.
You know, you know, traveling, you know, for an hour and a half to, or, you know, two hours to get up here late on a Monday.
Okay.
Is not, you know, that's not one of our objectives.
Yep, we can do that.
Perfect.
All right, so we'll talk some more, uh, August 26th is the next meeting, so, you know, we'll work through that.
All right.
All right.
And maybe in the meantime, to Target, hey, we've got this great sign, meets the conformance, doesn't even have to come in front of the planning board again, and the planning, uh, the town planner can approve it, and what do you think, guys? Let's give it a shot.
Right.
It might even be cheaper to make.
Can have a drone go to wherever they park and drop up their stuff.
I, I didn't mean, I didn't mean that as comedic, comedically as it sounded. It would be a very worthwhile discussion to have with them.
Yeah, we did go back and discuss.
You will have a set of minutes that you could actually show.
The, the beacon, they actually have pre-manufactured a, a lot of them. I can't give you a number, which is why they push for the beacon so hard. They actually lose money if they don't.
You, you made it clear about all several reasons that benefits Target here, right? At the end of the day, we're about the code and the, the, the consumers in Niskiwa, right?
Right.
So in either case, would you actually be painting the striping red? Do you stripe around, like, on the ground? You know how the handicap striping's blue?
Right.
Is the striping in front of these red?
I know typically with the stores that have the drive-up implemented, yes.
They, they re-color the lines for the specific parking slots, right?
So it's not, yeah.
Any other questions, Rose?
We had a few, I'm sorry, we had a few approvals with Target that had let them really move ahead in a lot of the renovations they were doing.
Renovations, storage.
They did get some waivers for their signage.
Right, but a lot of those things, apart from their facade, did it require any waivers on that? I can't recall.
Their facade did require some waivers.
Yeah.
Um, we did also, like, because when they were doing their renovations, they sort of temporarily staged in the parking lot, which we reviewed as well.
Right, I mean, the temporary things, they're temporary, right? And I think that's all gone, so that part makes sense to me.
Yeah, I think they did a good job. Yeah, this, yeah, would be permanent, yeah.
Is there, in one of your most successful stores, wherever it was in the southeast or midwest or wherever, is there ever more, so we're talking about two, right?
One.
Two.
Just one.
Two, two of these beacons?
No.
No, just one.
Is there ever a reason to grow beyond one?
No.
Do you have multiples?
Because, um, there's, again, about 24 daily customers, so to have more than one, it wouldn't be worth it.
So at 100 daily customers, you think one will suffice? Target would like to get to 100 daily customers, right? It's better than 24.
I don't have the information to answer that.
Have a conversation with them.
Right.
I think you guys know the parameters in which this board would not even need to look at this.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank.
Do you need to pull onto the images that you.
Yeah, sure. Sure.
And Laura, whatever we can do so that these folks don't have to come back up.
Yeah, that's a great idea, we can tell the conference.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
So, the plan of action is to send you the alternatives after we have a conversation with Target?
Yeah, alternatives and justification why or why not they wouldn't work, so we understand.
And look at the stores nearby.
And the stores nearby, and whether they're all conforming to your, uh, prototypical design, or whether there's been exceptions, and whether those exceptions work, okay, and why wouldn't they work here, I guess.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
And off the record, take the Thruway home.
I'm just going to do whatever maybe tells me.
All right, have a safe trip, appreciate you coming up.
Thank you, guys, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, got some discussion items, and like I mentioned earlier, uh, first discussion item is 1448 Balltown Road, the applicant's not here, we did hear from the public tonight, um, Ms. Abin regarding some concerns she had. There were no other speakers at privilege of, or at the, uh, public hearing, so the public hearing is still open, and then we will pick that up again on the 26th, we'll start off, uh, on the 26th under unfinished business, and see if anybody else has any comments, and, uh, have a presentation from the applicant.
Just one, just a question, Laura, are you going to send another announcement out about the public hearing?
Um, we probably wouldn't repost it in the paper, although I'm double-checking, because Linda stumbled on the date. I think the date in the paper is right, but the date on the back of our thingy is not right, so I'm double-checking. If the date is wrong, I will definitely repost it. If the date is right, when we hold the public hearing open, we don't repost.
Okay, all right, whatever the procedures. Interestingly enough, a couple of folks have talked to me, and they all, it never happened before, they saw the public hearing announcement, and they all.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Well, Jeff left, but I, they ran, I think, a notice of the public hearing, and actually, an article in the Gazette.
Yeah, so maybe that's why.
About the public hearing. It wasn't actually, I don't think they actually saw the public hearing.
Okay, they saw about it. You know, you think you might be right, actually.
Yeah, I think, because, uh, the Gazette called me ahead of time and said they wanted to make sure that, yeah.
I think one of the TV stations had it, too.
Yeah, I think it was very well publicized that the public hearing was going to be tonight. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on from that, and just go on discussion items, so 2348 Knott Street East, the facade and landscape drawings, and then we have the representative of the applicant here, and Mr. Diarpino can take us through where we stand.
Okay.
Which is more important, the architectural drawings or the inside?
Yeah, the architectials.
If you decide to talk over there, just pull the microphone off, it's on Velcro, If you decide to talk over there, just pull the microphone off. It's on Velcro and take it with you so we capture everything, okay?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name's Dave Kamer from ABD Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Dave Fusco for the Knots Landing West Apartments. Um, uh, I think you guys are all pretty familiar with this, uh, project, so, you can let me know what you would like to, uh, hear about it, and, um, I can answer any questions that you have.
Oh, is this the, the final? This is where we're at, and Dave, you had an opportunity to take a look at it?
Yeah, I took a look at it. So, so basically, a lot of this didn't have to deal with the engineering portion of it. The last presentation Luigi did, he had made some modifications to align the sidewalks. We had went through with the fire trucks coming in, the parking beneath. That was all worked out, the planting, screening, the dumpsters. A lot of this, um, basically went back to, uh, Dan, the architect, and just getting the floor plans to match up with the elevations, which I think that's where we are right now. The only main comment I have is, uh, the roof railing that's on top should have a little bit more detailing in it. Um, I'll, I'll make some comments on that. This is just a, more like a sketch to put the railing on there.
Right.
We're looking for a specific stop, you know, to, to keep with the architectural language that he's used on this. But overall, I think things are good. It conforms to the height that it needs to. Um, he's worked out the elevations for the parking garage to come in on the one end, and he leveled off the other end. Uh, there are windows only on the other, on the two end sides that face the adjacent properties, and that's reflective of what's in the, what's in the floor plans, so. I think overall, it's definitely come a long way.
The, uh, the railing in, in the center, Dave, does that increase the height of the, uh?
It, it does, but it's not part of the building proper. So I believe that doesn't count against the.
Thirty-five foot.
The thirty-five.
Strictly, uh, architectural detail.
It's ornamentation.
Yeah.
That's why it's actually important to see what it actually looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Close.
I believe that, uh, that top of that roof is right about 35, and then the railing is over.
No, no, I mean, the part about the railing not count because I, at least I, okay, at least, oh, I knew that.
Yep.
So this is, uh.
The color renderings are a little bit, a little bit better. There's cultured stone on the ground floor, siding on the composite, composite concrete siding or hardy board on the middle layers, and then the roof where the mansards are juts in and out for the roofing material, so. Got divided up into three. I think the color scheme was pretty good. It had.
Was that in the electronic copy?
Yeah, it's blues and grays and earth tones.
Fortunately, I didn't have a full-size color copy for tonight, but.
Yeah, that didn't change. And then I believe he had a, a window trim color too added to it, so.
Yeah.
It was in the one rendering.
So our, yeah, so our, our, um, engineering site plan approval, we clarified to make sure that, uh, they were to return to the final facade and landscaping. It would be approved via the, by the planning board via site plan amendment, so it would be a formal resolution. So, um, I think what we do is, if you guys have comments, we give them to the applicant. You guys can decide if you're ready to call for the final site plan amendment, and, um, then we're still finalizing some comments from the engineers, which hopefully could be done in two weeks, so that it would really be moving the project along.
What are the engineer comments about?
I think just final, um, there was some stormwater conflicts across the detention ba- pond, which, there's a couple of things. So what we look for before they go to building permit is a final letter from the TDE saying that there are no, that everything is, you know, conforming. Do you know of the conflicts? No? Yeah?
I know. I actually, I mean, I've looked at it extensively. I don't know that there are any conflicts, so.
So, so we would have a resolution?
No, I don't think they're insurmountable. I, they may have already been taken care of. We're just looking for a final letter from the TDE that says everything's fine. Yeah.
So, yeah, so condition number nine of the previous resolution states that we'd have a site plan amendment for the facade and landscape drawings. So we'd have a resolution, and then we'd have, uh, any conditions that aren't closed in the, in the follow-on resolution also, that we duplicate.
Yeah, right? So a lot, sometimes we just reference back to this resolution. Sometimes we include all of the, um, um, conditions again. I guess whichever one makes sense, we'd bring back for site plan amendment.
Yeah, probably good to have it updated. Well, only the conditions that apply on a go-forward basis, if there's any open items for engineering or.
Right, so.
Or that would be included.
Yeah, so for instance, um, number seven, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town designated, designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. That's the letter. So if we get a letter from the TDE that says, "All of my concerns have been addressed", you could remove that. But if we don't have that, then we keep that one.
Yep, no, that sounds good. That's, I think that's the way to go, so it's clean with the latest. And, uh, you get, um, some information in, into the office and for David to take a look at on the details on the railing. I think that's the only thing you requested, Dave. Is that right?
Right.
Yeah.
Dave, did you, so Dan must have a detailed drawing of that.
Of the railing?
Yeah.
No, he never put it in.
Oh, really? Okay.
No. We kept asking him to put it in, and then.
Okay.
It just never quite made it.
So that helps him too, because he's gonna need them when he needs to build the answer. He's gotta do it at some point.
Have to keep pestering him on that.
Yeah.
And, and the owner, Mr. Fusco, agreed with adding that as an architectural feature would be beneficial, so.
We're all set with the landscaping? Trees along, those greens?
Yeah, so I, you know, always think that it needs more trees, but what I noticed, and I think that it's important, and I'm just referencing it for the record, is that I, you know, really wanna make sure that there's a buffer over to the Green Farm, Green Farm Road, and right now there's only, you know, a red maple, a sugar maple and a red maple planted there. But if you look at the detail for the bio-retention stormwater area, it actually shows a fairly robust planting inside that stormwater detention basin that actually includes witch hazel, which can get pretty tall, and, um, red osier dogwood that doesn't get too tall, but the, the witch hazel does. So if you're, so if you're gonna line that basin with witch hazel and some shrubs, I think that's a really decent border. I just wanna make sure that that detail, and I will make sure that that detail is constructed during building, you know, so that it's not just mulch chips that you actually follow this plan, because I think if you follow this plan, there's more plantings than you actually see in the landscaping. So that's my one comment. I mean, they added the arboridie around the dumpster, which I thought was really important. They added some more mixed pines along the southeast corner, and they're not disturbing that R1, uh, they're not disturbing our one-zone parcel at all, so. So I, you know, I think the landscaping's okay. I would add more trees, but if we're making sure that we stick with the witch hazel and the plantings in the bio-retention basin, I feel like it's a good compromise.
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, so get that updated information into the department. They'll work on a tentative resolution for the next meeting. Everybody else okay with that? Tend to resolution for approval of the landscaping and architectural, which was an open item? Okay. Any update on status of clearing or anything like that on the project?
I heard it looked, uh, like it was undisturbed when I drove by it.
Yeah, it was. Anything at all, David? All right. Okay, so I think we're all set, unless you have any questions, Rose, then?
No, I don't think so, yeah.
All right. See you in a couple of weeks. Hopefully, we're there.
Sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So move on to reports. Laura, you have anything for us?
Um, I will send you a formal email, but we are going to schedule the mandatory sexual harassment training prior to the next, um, planning and zoning board meeting. And if you can't make that one, I mean, try really hard to make that one, but if you can't make it, um, you could theoretically come to win the town's training, like the highway department, very early in the morning or something too. So I'll send out that invitation to you guys hopefully tomorrow.
Oh, when you said prior, you mean the same day out, but early her and the end?
Yeah, so it would be like five, it would start at like 5:30, which I know might be some, because some of you guys work a little bit later, which is why we start the meeting at seven.
And what about the, you said the highways at the same day earlier during the day?
Oh, no, I don't know when the highway training is. No, they do theirs at like seven or seven AM.
Yeah.
Something like that.
But you said you'd get out any of the open trainings that are available and keep.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer for as many of you as possible to come to the one that's actually scheduled for the planning board, but if for some reason you can't make that one, then we might be able to sneak you into like a highway. Because Leslie actually came to one of the ones that was at the town hall. Yeah.
Okay.
I know it's gonna be tough.
Sounds it. As I said, if you know when the other, uh, open sessions are, you know, as long as everybody goes to a session, it would, would work, you know. Uh, I'm more flexible than some, since I have more time, but, uh.
Same reason, and do the daytime all the way boys.
Okay. All right, what else you have, Laura? Anything?
Um, no.
No. Like to welcome Ms. Kim.
Thank you.
Glad to have you on board. Often running hard, I, I see, of course, lots going on, so that's good. Nothing else? Any questions for Laura before we go on commission business?
Um, just one thing about the Target thing. Could you, could you ask them to, maybe if they can let us know 24 customers is what percentage of the daily, uh, in-store customer base they have? Just to get an idea. I mean, if, you know, if we end up all agreeing to this, you wanna know if you're doing it for, uh, 1% of their customer base or for 10%, right? Thank you.
Okay, all right. Move on to commission business. Mr. Diopino, do you have anything?
I'm just interested to watch the Schenectady International relocation. It's been pretty highly-publicized, so.
Yeah, is, uh, Laura, are you involved in that, in any of the meetings? Are there any discussions going on with, uh, Metroplex, or will there be, or?
Um, there hasn't been any formal meetings. Um, I think, you know, the town is very interested. It obviously impacts us a lot, and we would like to make sure that, that space is usable. And, yeah, go ahead.
Can we comment? I know it's David's turn, but I mean, I, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, it is good.
Because actually, they cited certain specific, okay, I remember the public's gone. They cited certain specific reg- reasons about basically Niskuna lacking certain things that create the, you know, a healthy, employee-attractive, um, environment, right? I think they were talking about, you know, restaurants and a lot of retail-y type things, which was kind of interesting. So I just thought that part was interesting that they, because now you have a hard data point, right? A big business, big piece of land, very prominent, deciding to leave, and then citing the town as part of the, the nature of the town as part of the reason.
Yeah, they're, they're solely car-dependent on that campus.
Right.
And if the employees have half an hour for lunch, it's very difficult for them to get off-campus, get something and get back very quickly.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's several reasons why I'm asking that, why I'm making that statement, right? Not just as a member of the planning board and a Niskuna resident, but there's some other big corporations in the area that.
Notice those things.
That try to serve their employees the same way.
Yeah, I remember when I first came here, actually, SI Group was interested in trying to create an actual paved connection to the bike path for their employees, because I think, like you say, it really is important to give them options, um, and places and things to do for lunch. Yeah, and it, it, I mean, they could, they have like cliffs between SI Group and the bike path.
Right.
Except for like one tiny section, but they were trying. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good comment, because if, uh, if there are any meetings or discussion, town board or planning department or attorney gets involved, those reasons, or could be the reasons what, make it difficult to have a new, um, uh, company come in, so we need to understand that. So either we can address them or fix them if possible, so that we can get somebody else in there. Obviously, it'd be nice to keep the zoning as it is, and that's at least current, my current opinion, and to be able to backfill it with somebody else, but it's a big property to also to maintain too. There's costs associated with the, just the lawn and everything they'll keep over there, I'm sure.
I mean, it's interesting, right? How big is that property compared to OD Heck?
That's 81 acres.
Yeah.
OD Heck is.
Forty.
Forty-two.
Yeah.
Forty-three.
Yeah.
So we have a situation where we're actually dealing with a property that's twice as big as the one we gave a significant amount of attention to.
Mm-hmm, but it has a fair amount of land that probably cannot be used.
It has. A lot of it is very topographically, topographically challenging.
I had raised the question at the economic development meeting in town hall, whether there was any impact from the roundabout, because if I worked there and I wanted to go to the city for lunch, I would probably not go south on Balltown and go through the city. I'd probably go to Aqueduct, and then I'm in the Anne Frank and Foster Ave area. There's several restaurants right there, and that's not a long haul. But if you freak out every time you have to go through that roundabout, it becomes a very long haul.
Yeah, although, I mean, quite honestly, like, probably at least 50% of them drive through that every day, probably. I mean, you probably figure 50% live north and 50% live south. Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying.
A, a lot of it has to deal with the fact that being on the northern end of town, they're not in close proximity to a retail area, and the closest one is Saint, is Saint James Plaza, and where the co-op is on Knot Street. And just the time it takes to get down there and back, not only add, I mean, you're on the feeder road, you're on Balltown again. So you're adding additional traffic, you know, throughout the day.
Not to mention, you gotta go left to get out of there.
Right.
Yeah, and I mean, theoretically, actually, it's still phase two of, you know, the PUD, but Rivers ledge is supposed to be introducing a small amount of commercial retail in that area, and, you know, they are, have cleared their site, are working on finalizing their utilities, are working on their upgrades to the Aqueduct Park. So I would expect to see some kind of update from them on phase two at some point. And I would think that that would be close enough, and maybe add that additional commercial sort of retail space area, fill that need for that particular location. I don't know if it will actually stretch all the way down to like Knowles, because they are obviously in a different location, but maybe, you know, looking at those mixed-use buildings, like, is something that we wanna continue to look at.
Yeah, I mean, it's clear that SI was disadvantaged in access to, you know, commercial stuff. And, and for whatever, you know, to your point, German, whatever's gonna happen there next, I think this becomes an addressable point.
Yep.
But then it has a lovely campus atmosphere that a lot of people find very attractive.
Sure.
It's kind of like the difference with state workers. Some love being in downtown Albany, and there are many of us who work very hard to get ourselves located on the uptown campus. And at least some of us wanted to cry because they moved us downtown after all of that, but.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's kind of different strokes for different folks, because you like different amenities.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of reasons why they're moving, right? It's not just this.
Yeah.
But this one happens to be one, I think, that we can probably validate those.
Yeah.
There's.
If nothing else, it would be instructive in what else we might be able to get located there.
So is there anything we can do as a planning board, or if there's any committees or task force, if any of us could join in? We, I'm sure we would have people willing to do that, including myself.
Yeah. On that note, this thought just entered in my head. Do you know what's going on with, uh, Environment One and their plans over there?
Um.
Look occasionally to see if trees are gone, but nothing seems to.
They, um, they completed, you know how their plan was in phases, and the first phase was to build that little bay where they could load the, uh, rolly tubes into the bay? They completed that phase, and as part of completing that phase, they basically did all of the site amenity stuff. It was a buffer to Amador, so they have built that berm and planted all of the conifer trees along that berm. Um, that will hopefully grow and be healthy and be a nice, uh, buffer to the new homes that are going up over there. And they are, as far as I know, complete with that part. The full building, the full separate building, I think, is on hold. They, I think, the next point that they would move forward, which they presented, would be the buil- the building that's actually still adjacent to the E1, and I think that is still something that they're working toward, but they haven't submitted any building permits for it. But I, and I can double-check, but I'm pretty sure that our resolution says when they're ready to build that second building, they actually still have to come back to us. So they, they would do some clearing for that building in the back, but the majority of it would be for that second building, which I think is on hold for now.
Okay.
They did do a good job with the little bay and the trees, though. Yeah, they did do a good job with that.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Diopino? Mr. Khan?
Nope.
Mr. Khan?
So, so actually, I, this is the most hardest commitment. I will not be here on the 26th.
Okay.
So, so I do have a question. I'm sorry, I know we are late for them. Is there a procedure for one of us to opine in absentia, like, by an email or letter, but have it be part of the public record and have it count, or if you're not here, you're not here, forget about it?
No, I think you can provide input. I don't know. We will look into it.
Like if on Friday we saw the, I'm here, I'm here on Fridays, like if we saw what Target had or before, I would like to at least say something if I wanted to.
Mm-hmm. I think that, just to speak on that, that you're not voting on it, but if you were to provide the full board with your opinion, um, that would be part of the administrative record to the extent that the voting members reference, uh, your input.
Yeah, and, because I feel like that's happened before too, like, yeah, we definitely have, and a lot of times, either the full board or the project lead, and the project lead can make it part of the record too.
And so definitely in the sexual harassment training, I'll need another day.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For what, this will be my third sexual harassment training within the past two months.
Sorry.
But I know I still have to take.
Yeah.
Hopefully it, you're, means you're really good.
No, no, honestly, it's, it's looked into your ass, and I know on the record here, I was, and some of the stuff I do with the school district, they, they, I, I think we need to get some form of that training shown to, maybe, you know, not two young kids, but definitely some of the kids who are in high school, later high school, because they not, they actually need to know what it is that they're, you know, that they need to be aware of.
Yeah, so we actually, it doesn't, at least in the town, we train our interns.
Yeah, so for whatever it's worth, I mean, they're, I'm not gonna go into any details, but there's a lot of things that have actually been ingrained in my head now within the past two months.
If you've already participated in the training, you can provide a form to wave out of it.
No, that's fine. I mean, I don't know. I can, I'll take.
Yeah, I'll send you the, I'll send you the alternative dates. So I'll send the whole planning board the training time prior to the next, uh, planning board meeting, and then try and have alternative dates when I send that email that I know of.
Great. Anything else, Mr. Khan?
No, thanks. Sorry.
Ms. Gold?
Um, any update on the Holocaust memorial?
Uh, it's actually still the same as the, the last time. I know they're working on the details, and they will bring back an updated design when they're ready, but I haven't heard a date from them yet.
Sheerfield?
Nope.
And I have nothing further. Okay, motion adjourned. Motion by Mr. Khan, second. All those in favor, German? Saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.